This debate is sponsored by Natus Federal Credit Union. KFDM and Fox 4 present. The Beaumont City Council Ward One Candidate Debate moderated by Aaron Drawhorn.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the city of Beaumont Ward One Debate. I'm Aaron Drawhorn, and I'll be your moderator here tonight. Let's show you a map of Ward One. This includes northwest Beaumont, the Dallin West neighborhood, the Belchase Thomas Road area, also Calder Place neighborhood. The seat right now currently held by Councilman Taylor Neeld, who is not seeking reelection after three two-year terms, and as a proponent of term limits, he says it's just time to relinquish his seat. One of the two gentlemen here tonight will win that seat in the May third election. That is already less than one month away. The candidates are in alphabetical order by last name. Corey Crenshaw, longtime attorney, former Jefferson County District Attorney and former federal prosecutor. Corey Crenshaw also served as a county court at law judge when Judge Lupe Flores passed away 10 years ago this month. And also former state representative Mark Stiles. He served eight terms in the Texas House of Representatives from 1983 through 1999. Over 16 years, his district included part of Jefferson County in Austin. And following his legislative years, Mark Stiles was group president at Trinity Industries Incorporated. Let's talk about the rules of the debate real fast. Each candidate will get to answer each question, and then you're going to be given equal time. You both get one minute to answer the question directed at you, then a one-minute rebuttal from the other candidate. When you hear this bell, there is the sound. Time is up. You can finish your sentence. You don't have to stop mid-sentence. So we're all, I guess we can say, public figures, right? But we don't know each other personally, full disclosure. I met Mr. Stiles for about 30 or 45 seconds at the Republican Women's Luncheon when I was invited guest last month. Mr. Crenshaw, I spoke with you in January, on New Year's Day, actually, on the phone, and we text messaged about an unrelated news story that, what was that tragic attack in New Orleans and nothing to do with the city of Beaumont? So I just wanted to get that out there. Now, moments ago, KFDM Fox 4 News Director Keith McMahon did the coin toss to determine who gets to go first in this debate, and the winner of the coin toss, Mr. Crenshaw. Then we're going to alternate who goes first responding to each question. The question order was predetermined, and it is not going to change. All right, Mr. Crenshaw, you won the coin toss. The floor is yours for a one-minute opening statement.
Thank you, Aaron. My name is Corey Crenshaw, and I am running for Ward One of the Beaumont City Council. I love Beaumont. I was born and raised here, but I believe we deserve better leadership than what we're getting today out of City Hall. And I think that we need new, fresh leadership. Here's what we've got to do. Number one, I am for prioritizing public safety. And what does that mean? That means we've got to do a better job with safer streets. Number two, we've got to end the war against our firefighters. Next, I think that we've got to do a better job managing our money. Fiscal responsibility is too important to allow us to continue to spend millions of dollars every year over budget. We cannot continue to do that. As your previous district attorney, judge, and a federal prosecutor, I have the experience to do this job, and I'm asking for your vote.
Mr. Crenshaw, thank you very much. Mr. Stiles, your one-minute opening statement, sir.
I want to thank Channel 6 for putting this debate on. I'm Mark Stiles. I'm running for Ward One on City Council of Beaumont. I was in the legislature for 16 years, as was previously said. I worked hard for southeast Texas. I passed 156 bills and six constitutional amendments. I made sure our water wasn't transferred out of east Texas in order to keep our economic development opportunities firm. I made sure that Lamar University was going to get equal and fair appropriations whenever they were moved to the Texas State University system. I put in the money and made sure that Major Drive was completed to be a major thoroughfare through Beaumont to relieve Interstate 10. I think that Beaumont needs leadership as well. I don't say that we have poor leadership now because I think Taylor Neal's done a good job. In fact, one of the reasons that I'm running is because Taylor suggested it to me back in November.
All right, Mr. Stiles, thank you very much. Gentlemen, you both appeared at the Canada Forum hosted by the Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce on March 25th. That one was broadcast. You've done some other things, but in that venue, the rules prevented you from directly addressing each other. And we did hear a lot of similarities. You want to reduce crime. You both support law enforcement, our police. You both want to address the homeless issue. You want to improve the city's infrastructure. You want to diversify our local economy. You're both in favor of bringing a hotel to downtown Beaumont. You both have been public servants. You both love our community and our city, and it was a very nice civil discussion. That's what makes us great. But, you know, at the end of the day, it is politics, so we don't want any mudslinging or anything, or anything vitriolic, but all politics is local, as Tip O'Neill said. So let's just cut to the chase and put up our first topic, and that is what key differences on the issues do you have with your opponent? What key differences on the issues? Mr. Stiles, you will go first for this one, sir.
Well, Mr. Crenshaw just said that the fire department was at war with the city of Beaumont. I think you need to look at things honestly the way they are. The fire department sued the city of Beaumont, and they've appealed. Beaumont lost, Beaumont's appealed, and that appeals continuing. But we're not at war with our first responders. I support making sure that we have the first responders have all the necessary resources they need. I'd like for them to be fully staffed. I think that Mr. Crenshaw's been appointed to every job he's ever had. I've never been appointed. I was elected eight times. I was elected two times in east Texas for the school boards. I have a unique understanding of what government does and what municipal government does. I'd like to bring that to the table and make sure that we are able to move on those big ideas. The big ideas like saving our water, building their criminal justice complex, helping Lamar get into a better university system.
All right, Mr. Stiles, thank you very much. Mr. Crenshaw, the same question to you. What key differences on the issues do you have with your opponent?
Well, let me begin by saying the key differences. He mentioned earlier that my, the current incumbent to this seat, Taylor Neeld, asked him to run. Taylor Neeld is my campaign manager and has been asking me to run, and it's 100% behind me to do this job for the past several years. So that would be one key difference. Number two, let's talk about the fire department. There is a war against our firefighters, and that war is due to the mismanagement by city leadership of the fire department. We currently are $2 million in the hole and over budget on overtime. That's unacceptable. And I found out very recently that now the city's projecting that we're going to be $5 million over budget with firefighter overtime. That's not the firefighter's fault. That is a leadership and a management fault within the city. And the lawsuits absolutely need to stop. We are spending thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars on these lawsuits, and the city keeps appealing, and it needs to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. If you talk to the old timers, they remember the days when downtown Beaumont really was vibrant. We even have some pictures here. That's the old White House. Crowds flock downtown from the '40s to the '50s to the '60s. High-end department stores down there, and you had to circle to find a parking spot and feed the meter in those days. But business and people fled to other areas like Gateway and Parkdale. And Beaumont's blighted downtown was not unique among Texas or American cities. So we need to talk about from the glory days to a downtown turnaround. You see here at the state of the city in 2023, the theme was Beaumont Building for the Future. Mayor Roy West unveiled this downtown revitalization plan. It's showing plans for a waterway kind of similar to a Riverwalk like you see in San Antonio, quaint shops, restaurants, lots of foot traffic. A hotel convention center would all be within walking distance. Now, you both have expressed support for a hotel downtown. This is not a market right now where the present conditions would dictate a Ritz Carlton or Four Seasons. We know that. The Beaumont Hilton property on I-10 in Washington, that was huge when that opened, and then it went into foreclosure, and then the MCM Dela Elegante took over in '04. So this question is for Mr. Crenshaw. We're alternating who goes first, and what type of hotel should be built downtown, and Mr. Crenshaw, should public dollars be used to fund part of it?
I believe that we've seen some plans for a Doubletree and also a Weston. Having stayed at Weston's, Hyatt's, Doubletree, I think any of those properties would be acceptable, and I would be all for that. Probably out of that group, I think a Hyatt, especially with the convention center. I've stayed in those similar type of hotels, and I think that that makes sense, and that would be a great idea. Should public dollars be used for part of it? I think that there's no way to make this possible and make this work without public dollars. But my fear is also that there's a very good chance that there's not going to be room with the current consultant that we're using and their plans to have private investment. And I absolutely believe that a private investor is necessary to make this work. Right now, the numbers I'm hearing, it's going to be very hard to attract a private investor. So yes, public funds would have to be used, but it should be the voters to vote on that in the November bond issue. And if the voters decide that they want the hotel, I'll be all for it.
Mr. Stiles, your opinion on this. What type of hotel should be built downtown, and should public dollars be used to fund part of it?
Well, I would think of something like an Embassy Suites would work well because they have multiple different types of rooms and in accordance with the convention center also. I believe we need to have those convention center and hotel downtown to increase the foot traffic. It's a, it's a pretty serious thing to think about having a Riverwalk. I think that's way down the road. I don't support building a Riverwalk right now. I don't even think that should be part of the equation. But the bond issue is going to be something that I think all the people in Beaumont will be able to vote for, one way or other. They can vote for it or vote against it, and I don't have a problem with seeing them have a choice on that, on that matter. I think there will be restaurants. I think there will be retail stores. I think there will be other stores that are built whenever that, when that hotel is built.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles.
We've been trying for 40 years to build a hotel downtown.
You may want to repeat yourself there.
We've been trying for 40 years to build a hotel downtown. Finally, maybe it'll come to fruition with a public-private partnership.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stiles. We're going to stay downtown for our next question. The Gilbert Building for decades stood, a historic four-story building, was dilapidated, vacant, and boarded up in recent years. A far cry seen here in this vintage postcard from its former self. The Gulf National Bank was its first tenant 123 years ago when the four-story building opened September 3, 1902. But as we know, the evening of June 6 of last year, a devastating fire tore through the historic building. It took hours for Beaumont firefighters to get this blaze under control, and there's been a lot of debate in the months since this fire on what to do with the historic structure. On Monday, Beaumont developer Tom Flanagan, just giving background here, announced he has a buyer for the Gilbert Building. And his name alone, for many in Beaumont, has been a lightning rod, a lot of strong opinions. He's been described as an embattled businessman. He has been named a suspected party to arson in the Gilbert Building fire. He has not been criminally charged. We have to point out from the beginning, he has maintained his innocence. But by our count, he owns 17 downtown buildings, including the Gilbert Building, and if this sale goes through, he'll own 16. So, Mr. Stiles, it's your turn to go first. The question for you is, how should the city of Beaumont proceed in its relationship with developer Tom Flanagan?
Well, Mr. Flanagan needs to pay his taxes. That'd be one thing to do. I think that the city, the county, and all the other taxing entities would be well-served if that was to happen. I think that it's possible that there's a sale of the Gilbert Building coming up. I understand the engineer who's been doing the work is one of the buyers. I think it would be a very positive thing for downtown if that building could be rebuilt and rehabilitated and be put back on the tax rolls.
Mr. Crenshaw, how should the city of Beaumont proceed in its relationship with developer Tom Flanagan?
We must get great partners for private investors in downtown Beaumont that want to work with the city and want to be part of that. And unfortunately for Mr. Flanagan, he has been at odds with the city for so long on so many different buildings and so many different projects. I'm just, I'm very concerned that that situation is ever really going to improve. If the Gilbert Building is going to be sold, I think that's great news. It was going to cost the taxpayers $400,000 to tear that building down, and I'm not convinced we would have ever recouped our money. So I do believe that the Gilbert Building is best to be sold to a private investor. Hopefully, that is a reputable investor with good financial backing, and we can turn that old beautiful building into something great again. So I do believe that we've got to do a better job with downtown. There are, downtown Beaumont, in my opinion, really is coming back. It looks better lately than it's looked in a long time, and we've got to do a better job with our partnerships.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Issue four, crime concerns. Both of you strongly support Beaumont police. You are pro-law enforcement. A lot of voters, though, in Ward One and all across the city, frankly, are concerned about crime. We just had a senseless murder last night. A 16-year-old has been arrested, accused of that murder. Mayor Roy West says the crime rate is lower than what it was two years ago. But when people go online, you can take a look at the monitor here, maybe a little hard to see with the fine print. This is a Google search, and I'll just tell you, Google's experimental generative AI right-away list Houston, Dallas, San Antonio, Beaumont, and Lubbock, Corpus, and Amarillo as crime cities. And if someone is looking to move here to ask the question on Google, is Beaumont a safe city? I'll read here what it says. Quote, "Beaumont, Texas has a higher crime rate than the national average, making it a relatively unsafe place to live, especially compared to other cities in Texas." That's some background. The question will go to Mr. Crenshaw first. How should the city of Beaumont combat crime? And that with the preface, besides hiring more police officers?
Well, if we are going to hire more police officers, they do not need to be part of more management and more hiring. We need more boots on the ground. We need more officers on the streets, and we don't just need officers out there making arrests. We need more proactive officers and more proactive programs. We did a crime abatement program when I was district attorney on 11th Street. It had some great success, and we were able to help businesses in that area that were being plagued with, with crime. We've got to do a better job and be smarter with our resources. We've recently implemented the Real Crime, the Real-Time Crime Center. There's been some significant improvement with our, some of our crime rates recently, which I believe is what you're referring to, Aaron, with what the mayor's touting. But if you ask this family who just lost their father, their loved one yesterday to this horrible crime, you don't feel like Beaumont is safer. And so we've got to ask ourselves, why is the Beaumont Police Officers Union, the Jefferson County Deputies Union, why are all of these law enforcement partnerships supporting me? And it's because I've got the real solutions for Beaumont.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Mr. Stiles, besides hiring more police officers, what can the city of Beaumont do to combat crime?
Well, 10 years ago, there was 260 police officers. Right now, there's 260 police, foreign police officers. I think there needs to be more police officers on patrol in the city of Beaumont instead of in the upper echelons. We need cops on the street. We need the cops in the west end. We need them in the north end, the south end, the east end. It's a shame that that person lost his life last night to a 16-year-old, 16-year-old kid. But I believe incarceration versus education is a big prime problem that we have. We can't make parents be parents, and that's one of the issues we have in Beaumont. I think that the judge, Naomi Doyle, has got a mentorship program that she's done for criminal justice and for judicial concerns, and I think there should be more programs like that. We need to work with our private schools and BISD to try to determine what the root causes of all these problems are we're having with youth crime.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stiles. Both of you are running for a reason, and we just want your, your take on the current leadership in the city of Beaumont. I reached out to Mayor Roy West, and he texted me this afternoon or late this morning. He says he's not making an endorsement in this particular race. As we know, he is running for reelection. The mayor has four opponents, and city manager, as KFDM reported, Kenneth Williams, was hired in September 2022 in a 43-vote, many considered controversial. He got a raise in December, making roughly $268,000 a year. So let's begin our fifth question right now. What is your performance review of Mayor Roy West and city manager Kenneth Williams? And, Mr. Stiles, it is your turn to go first, sir.
Pretty tough question. It's a, I know that the Real-Time Crime Center is very important to the city of Beaumont, and I know the mayor brought that in. I know that we have gotten a lot of work done with children's programs, like the Stewart Pruitt, the Sterling Pruitt Center in the north end. I know that we've done a lot with our parks program. I know that we have got some people that think we should probably advise against the city manager getting his raise. I probably would have advised it wasn't a good time, considering the, considering the budget being the position that it is, because we need a balanced budget and we don't need to spend more money than we have. I think that Roy West has done a good job in trying to get around the community. I think Kenneth Williams has done a good job considering what he's got, but we need to realize he's got two more assistant city managers than we had five years ago, and these positions are $200,000 apiece. And if we've got to have a problem with trying to find money in the budget, we may have to look at things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Mr. Crenshaw, your turn. What is your performance review of Mayor Roy West and city manager Kenneth Williams? One minute, sir.
My family was one of the largest financial backers of Roy West. I had high hopes in 2023 for Roy West when he got elected, and I must be honest, he has been a disappointment, in my opinion. He ran on the issue of prioritizing public safety, and he claimed that we were in a crisis with public safety. And here we are, two years later, with $2 million in overtime going over budget, creating now a financial crisis for our city, with projections now to be a $5 million over budget on overtime with the fire department. There is a lack of leadership in the city of Beaumont, and there's a poor management going on with several departments. I believe that when you are spending $3.5 million over budget, that you should not reward the person in charge of all that, being our city manager, with a big fat raise. I did not believe that that was appropriate, and I 100% was against it.
Well, one thing that we need to do.
Well, it may take away from your time on this, but maybe we'll let this go.
Well, one thing, one thing that needs to happen.
Well, he doesn't get a response.
No, you can answer your question, Mr. Stiles, under the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the way the rules were.
Very good.
One minute, and you can use it as you wish.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
No problem, sir. Let us put in a plug for ourselves right now. Subscribe to KFDM's YouTube channel. That's where everyone is watching news on KFDM. We have 253,000 subscribers. Please subscribe today. Okay, Councilman Mike Getz currently serves on Ward Two. He's being challenged by Joey Hilliard. Mr. Getz told me on Sunday he's not endorsing either of you. So if he's reelected, one of you is going to serve with Mr. Getz. So I asked if he wanted to submit a question for both of you, same question, and guess what? He did. Here's what it has to do with, the homeless crisis. He writes, quote, "With all the discussion and efforts going on with downtown development, it must be recognized that having homeless individuals and vagrants sleeping and camping at locations like City Hall, the downtown library, and other spots downtown make it more difficult to promote downtown development." Now, he writes, and you may want to read this, "Candidate Crenshaw is on record saying that he supports the previous attempt by Councilman Getz to create a primitive camping site on city-owned property for the homeless to have as a refuge." Getz writes, "Candidate Stiles is on record as saying the city should not get involved in providing a location for the homeless as a refuge." So Councilman Getz wants to know this. Is that still the position of each of you? And would you elaborate as to what you think needs to be done about improving the homeless situation? Mr. Crenshaw, your turn to go first.
I've seen the emails that business owners on Calder send to the city manager that have been largely ignored. I see the desperation from these business owners. I talked to Mr. Broussard the other day with Broussard's Mortuary. Business owners all over the area of town where the homeless are now receiving services are desperate for help. They should not have to get to work in the morning to their businesses that they have their livelihoods invested in and have to clean up human waste and human feces. That is unacceptable, and our city needs to put in the time and effort to come up with a plan. I'm not saying the homeless encampment is, is, is perfect as Mr. Getz proposed, but it is a plan. And when Mayor West became mayor, he ended the monthly homeless coalition meetings and decided to go to quarterly. And it seems like the city has been rudderless on the issue of the homeless situation. And I do believe that we need to sit down, weigh the options, and we've got to help our small business owners in the Calder area with this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Mr. Stiles?
Well, last week, I went and spent two and a half hours at the mayor's homeless coalition meeting. Listened to all the stakeholders, listened to everybody that was in there about every problem that they wanted to have. My wife asked the question out of desperation, what is it you want the city of Beaumont to do? And you know what the answer was, Aaron? Not one suggestion was put in place. Now, the Salvation Army has 24 beds for women and 26, 25 beds for men. Some other place provides food. Some Uncle Henry, some other place, Uncle Henry's place has clothing. But not one person had a solution. I happen to know that the people that were in the, in the area that lived in the area, had businesses in the area that Getz was talking about, didn't want the, didn't want the encampment there. There's a no camping ordinance in Beaumont now. That's one thing that the mayor did. And I think that the police have taken some people off the street because of this, because of trespassing. And I think that that's a, that's a very reputable thing for us to do in Beaumont. We can't solve the problem. Some people don't want the help.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. This is a nonpartisan race. There's not going to be an R or a D by your name, but nationally, we know politics has gotten kind of divisive. Mr. Stiles, you served in the Texas House. You were an elected Democrat, elected eight times from here. Mr. Crenshaw, you openly support President Trump on social media. Mr. Stiles, some conservatives may think, oh, wasn't he a Democrat? Mr. Crenshaw, some on the left may think, oh, Corey Crenshaw is too MAGA. He's a Trumper. And that, gentlemen, that may affect their opinions about you. So the question is, what is your overall current political ideology, and how will it affect your vote on the city council? Your turn to go first, Mr. Stiles.
I served 16 years as a Democrat. There wasn't any Republican primaries at some, some, some of the times. I still lean towards the Democrats. I, I look at things like today. I think that we ought to have performance audits. I think we ought to have efficiency audits. I supported things that, I supported George W. Bush, traveled all over the state of Texas and all over the United States with him, trying to get him to be president. I voted in Republican primaries in east Texas where there wasn't any other primary. I have, I have supported both parties. I believe in, I believe in picking the person at the time, but I also believe that the right people ought to be, ought to be elected.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Mr. Crenshaw, your overall political ideology, how will it affect your vote on city council?
Let me be clear. I am a proud Republican. I 100% am a fiscal conservative. And when and if I am elected to Ward One, I promise that fiscal responsibility and public safety will be my number one and number two priorities. Let me also say this. I believe that we have a nonpartisan race here, and I did not want to run and go around and just get support of Republicans. So from day one, when I announced my campaign, I asked Pastor John Adolf to be my treasurer. He is a Democrat, and he is a leader in the black community. And I think it's important for me to have a campaign and a coalition that is both Democrats and Republicans, because we must come together as a city and unite if Beaumont is going to move forward and be a better place for us all to live in. Also, when it comes to politics, I have crossed the line in the, in the past. I did support Xena Stevens publicly to be our sheriff because I thought she was the best candidate.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Issue eight is infrastructure, and we'll be wrapping up soon. When citizens of Beaumont turn on their tap, they want clean water. They also don't want sewage backing up. They want nice drainage. Parts of Beaumont, the infrastructure is aging. Some pipes are 70 years old. Some pipes are 70 years old. They have reached their breaking point, as it says right there on the screen, and so have many citizens. So the question is, what should the city do to solve the decades-long issue with sewer and drainage? And how do you pay for the upgrades? Mr. Crenshaw, you go first.
Well, the city of Beaumont has actually made a lot of improvements over the last years in upgrading infrastructure, but so much more has to be done. People can't flush their toilets when it rains. That's unacceptable. Areas of town have horrible drainage, and the streets flood every time it rains. And being in Beaumont, we get a lot of rain, so we've got to do a better job than that. Voters will have a decision in November. I am on, I'm proud to be appointed on the bond committee that is going to be making recommendations to the city council and for voters to decide what they want to do. And there's, there are going to be some things in the bond issue I'm not going to be in favor of, like a new city hall that's being proposed. I think that's a ridiculous waste of money, but we desperately need infrastructure upgrades. If Beaumont's going to grow, if we're going to attract new businesses and families that are going to want to come here, we need to have the infrastructure that it needs in order to grow and prosper as a city. So I will be recommending that we vote, and I will vote for, infrastructure improvements and funding those with a bond, if that's the only way we can get it done financially.
Mr. Styles, decades-long issue with sewer and drainage. How do you pay for the upgrades, sir?
Well, we've spent millions of dollars on sewer and water upgrades in Beaumont. In fact, I think last year it's over $50 million. And if we're going to fix the problem once and for all in all areas of town, not just Ward One, it's going to take a bond issue. And those bond issues will be things that people can vote for. There'll be a number of things on that bond issue, like the private partnership, private-public partnership for the hotel, for infrastructure, for streets, for drainage, for water, for sewer. And I think that that's going to be the proper place to take care of it. If the people decide they don't want it, then that'll kind of, kind of end the, end the discussion. But there's going to be an opportunity to vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Styles. Issue 10, business economic development. We are a heavily petrochemical industry, but we can also diversify the economy, drawing employers and new businesses. So let's get down to business and get the public interested. You know, we never got the Papacitos on I-10 in Walden, although the slab's been there for years. Buc-E's never built in the Golden Triangle. A lot of people still hold out hope for that. But look at comparable populations. You know, Colleen has an In-N-Out Burger, although Texas probably is always going to be a Whataburger country. You know, look at Tyler, Texas. They have a nice Brazilian steakhouse, Texas Day Brazil. They're also getting a Costco in Tyler. You drive two hours away, Lafayette, Louisiana, has a Costco, the only one between Houston and New Orleans. We can go on. Waco has a Whole Foods. It's not just restaurants or shopping. Texas has a couple dozen major Amazon warehouses, fulfillment centers, and we have tons of land. The Amazon video is about to come up. I mistimed it there. But I remember when I was excited, we got an Olive Garden in Beaumont. So beyond the restaurants and the big-box retailers, and we mainly did that just so the public knows what economic development can all entail, you know, small business, medium, large, what should Beaumont do to diversify its economy? So let's put that up, sir. And this will go to Mr. Styles. It's your turn to go first. How can the city's economic development efforts improve?
One thing the city needs to do is cut the red tape when it comes to permitting process. I think that there's a lot of small businesses that are expanding right now in Beaumont. And then we go back, we talked about the hotel downtown. Forever hotel room in that, forever hotel room, it's going to be like building a $235,000 house. Last year, we only built 140 houses in Beaumont. The year before that, 277. In the last 10 years, we've lost 10,000 water taps. We've got to change all that, and we've got to change that with the image that we have. We've got to change, we've got to support the school district with our private partnerships. We've got to support the, the police department. We've got to support the fire department. We've got to support economic development. We, for the first time in 20 years, we have an economic development director in Beaumont. And I think that working with the Chamber of Commerce and working with downtown Beaumont and working with other visitors, Convention Bureau, we can have all those money, all those things put together, and all those monies focusing on bringing in economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Styles. Mr. Crenshaw, how can the city's economic development efforts improve?
I agree with Mr. Styles about cutting the red tape. I hear from businesses and business owners all the time that City Hall and dealing with the city can be very frustrating. And so I do think that we need to improve that. We need to cut the red tape, and we need to let Texas and the United States know that Beaumont is open and ready for business. We have a lot of things that are great here in Beaumont, but unfortunately, our poor schools and our high crime have made it very, very difficult to attract people. And so we've got to do a better job with our crime. We've got to do a better job with our schools, and once you improve that, I think people will come back. And when you want to talk about diversification, while that sounds great, I actually want to double down on the petrochemical industry. You know, Spindletop put Beaumont on the map. We broke the monopoly of the Rockefeller family and Standard Oil when Spindletop gushed its first gusher. It was a wonderful thing. I want to get these energy companies that have plants all over our area to invest in downtown Beaumont and help us bring those old buildings back to life and bring more money back to Beaumont.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. So at the beginning, we started with my first question, what were some key differences? But we have one more question than your closing statements, but I just want to squeeze this in. What is something positive that you respect about your opponent? Your turn to go first, Mr. Crenshaw.
Well, I can say that while I was only three when he went into legislature, I do believe he served this community well, and he was a good legislator, and he is a good family man, from what I've heard. And I will say, he and I have interacted on numerous occasions in this campaign. We shake hands. We are friendly. And I told him, the very first time I met him in person at, I think it was the Baptist Foundation event, I said that regardless of who wins, let's run a clean, friendly campaign. We both love Beaumont. We both want to do what's best for Beaumont, and let's get together, regardless of who wins, have coffee, and figure out how we can support the other one after they win. And I still hope that that is accurate, and that is my intent and what I want to do. And Mr. Styles is my neighbor. We don't live far from each other. I live off of Delaware. He lives on Thomas Road. And I know we both care about this town, and Beaumont needs better leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Same question to you, Mr. Styles. What is something positive that you respect about your opponent?
Well, Mr. Crenshaw, I went to law school. He's an attorney. And I've got a son that's an attorney that's moving to Beaumont to open a law practice. I think that, that those are good things to do. You've got to have somebody sue somebody all the time. You know, and the good thing about this, about this town and this, this portion of things that we're talking about, I've got a wonderful wife, I've got seven kids, I've got 11 grandchildren, and I've got one great-granddaughter. I want this town to grow. I want to see this town expand. I want to see they have homes. I want to see them be able to build and be able to enjoy this city like I have. I love Beaumont. I think Beaumont's a great town to live in. Sure, we've got crime problems, but every other city does too, but we've got to be able to deal with those things by community involvement, community policies. And we have a school district that's got problems, but there's good things in that school district. Fletcher Elementary is an A-rated school. The Career Center, the Early College Program, that's 100% graduation.
All right, Mr. Styles, you will go first on closing. You pretty much have carte blanche, say whatever you want in your closing statement. One minute, sir.
I'd like to make sure that everybody knows that I support first responders. I think they're very important to the city. I think our police department needs to have, be able to have additional police on the street. I think our farming, you know, we got 232 firemen, they ought to have 255. They ought to be fully staffed, and that would help some of the thing with the, with the overtime. The overtime, you know, people don't like to ride on those ambulances. They like to ride on fire trucks. And a lot of times when they're assigned to those, they like to take sick time. They like to take time off. And unfortunately, that's caused the, the problem we've got with our overage in our city budget. I think it's $3 million in overtime, not $2 million in overtime. And I think a lot of that has to do with the way it's managed inside with the people that work there. I support Earl White. I think he's a great fire chief. I think that, I think that they do as good a job as they can, possibly can do. But I also think that there's always some things you can do with performance and, and efficiency studies. I suppose, I support bringing in an efficiency, an efficiency and, and of study.
Thank you very much, Mr. Styles. Mr. Crenshaw, you have the floor for your closing statement.
Thank you. My fellow citizens of Beaumont, you have a choice when you go to the polls on April 22nd for early voting. You get to decide whether you want politics of the past and to maintain the status quo with my opponent, or you can go with fresh, fearless leadership, which is what you have known from me since I served as your district attorney in 2014, the efficient and excellent docket that I ran as judge in 2015, my history as a federal prosecutor here, working for the Department of Justice. I have the experience we need on the Beaumont City Council to move Beaumont forward, have safer neighborhoods, have, do a better job of managing our money. And I'm not just running on my old relationships. I put together a coalition with my campaign. I'm endorsed by black ministers. I'm endorsed by Joe Penland. I'm endorsed by the Police Officers Union. I'm endorsed by the Firefighters Union and unions in general. I ask for your endorsement and your vote as well.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. We appreciate that. Corey Crenshaw, Mark Styles, we appreciate you participating here on KFTM and Fox 4's debate tonight. Thank you so much. One of you, too, will win that seat. May 3rd is the election. Once again, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Talking about the issues with this gentleman. That will do it for our Ward One debate. Next week, on Wednesday, we're going to be hearing from two candidates running for council Ward Two. It'll be right here on our YouTube livestream at 7 o'clock. The big mayoral debate is coming up on April 23rd on the Fox 4 News at 9:00, and I will see you tonight for KFTM 6 News at 10:00. Good night.
This debate has been sponsored by Natus Federal Credit Union.
You know this feeling. She's brand new, and she's all yours. It's a new beginning, and Natus helped you get here. With so many loans to choose from, they make the process easy. Call, text, video chat, or come in and get your loan started today. Natus Federal Credit Union, family, friends, community.